Let me call this meeting to order. Let's do the indications. Dear Lord, I pray that you be with us today as we take care of the business for the citizens of the city of Fort Oglethorpe and help us to make those decisions in a manner that's what's good for this city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, the minutes of the council meeting of April 27, 2015. If the council has had an opportunity to review those, is there a motion to approve?
No motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. Any further discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, communication from the mayor. The mayor's gonna be extremely brief.
Two days.
Cabela's is gonna open Wednesday. It's gonna be, it's a huge thing for the city of Fort Oglethorpe. It's gonna be a huge sales tax producer for our city and our county. They had special limitations last night. There are again tonight. That's why this meeting has been moved from 6:30 to 3:00. And they, it's a great store. I was fortunate enough to get a tour a couple of days ago. The store manager took me and an individual through the store and it is, if you hadn't been through it, go. It's beautiful, beautiful, beautiful facility and it's, it's a game changer. The AFC doctor's office opened today. I stopped by there and said hello today and the doc that's gonna be there on a regular basis was not there. He was waylaid and will be back, he will be there next Monday. So, and they'll have a grand opening ribbon cutting sometime in June. So, and that's it. Next item on the agenda, zoning matters. We have none. The public hearing, as you saw, has been canceled. The third and final reading on ordinance 2015 dash 01, which we would have had the public hearing, is tabled until June the 15th. Next item on the agenda, third and final reading.
Could I get you to formally vote on tabling the public hearing and the third and final reading on ordinance number 2015 dash 01?
Mayor will entertain a motion to table those two and we'll do it at one time and we'll vote. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And that just take care of both. Am I correct?
Yes.
One other thing, and I, the, are you the gentleman?
Yes.
I told him that we, since we couldn't accommodate him, that he could briefly just introduce himself and tell you what he plans to do for the next meeting to formally introduce this, this project, if you'll give him just a couple of minutes to speak.
All right, let's vote on that and then we'll give you your time. We have a motion and a second. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm just gonna pan these out real quick and I'll be very, very kind and I understand you. Got some other agenda items. Michael Osburn called Valley Engineering, 14700 West 114th Terrace, Lenexa, Kansas. My client is Zimmerman Investments and they had actually been before you two years ago on this project and at the time unfortunately there were some issues with the state that they were not able to take it to conclusion. It is back before you again. Unfortunately with the delay that we're experiencing today, and that's where I appreciate Mr. Goulart letting me get up and speak for just a few seconds, we may not be able to take it to the state again this year because we would not have potentially the zoning in place by the application time with the delay to June 8th. We're still working with the state to see if we can possibly get it put in by getting, if we were fortunate enough to be approved on June 8th. We just do not, will not have an answer back from the state on that until the end of this week. With that though, we do and would like to continue going forward with this project even if we can't submit it to the state this year. That being said, it would get us an approval that would have our zoning in place for applications for the 2016 funding elements associated with this type of project. And with that, I guess I would ask your thoughts on allowing us to either come back on the 8th, which we're currently scheduled to do, or if by chance that might not work with the state in moving forward, that we might shove that back a couple more meetings and then come in at that time. We're open for either suggestion by pushing it back if we can't go back in this year. It will give us more overlap next year for our application. We wouldn't have to rush through the procedure again. We thought we had a little time on this one, but due to certain circumstances obviously it's kinda pushed us around a little. I'm open to listen to anything that he may have thoughts on that.
Mr. Goulart, what's your thoughts on that?
I concur with him 100% is that even if we have to table it again, it would give him more time in the future to present his application to the state. However, if it can still be presented in a timely manner, we can address the third and final reading on the 8th of June.
Is there any opposition to that, those thoughts from the council?
And, and with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that we may have so that if we do come back on the 8th, we can be fully prepared to discuss anything or questions that individuals may have regarding this project, being it'll be such a quick turnaround if we are fortunate enough to convince the state to let us come in shortly thereafter.
Any of the members have any questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith.
The state is regulating this.
Yes, sir.
What, what are they gonna have to say about it?
Well, what it entails is the funding mechanism. The state of Georgia will issue what are known as tax credit funds for a portion of the financing associated with this project. Every year they allocate funding to projects that they approve throughout the state. And with that then, we have to follow very rigid guidelines outlined by the state housing authority. OFA, I believe is the name of it here. Or no, not OFA, that's Oklahoma. Excuse me, I apologize. It's the Georgia Housing Fund. And with that, they will regulate both who we can have as tenants so far as certain guidelines of criminal background checks and things of that nature. They're very restrictive in that regard. And with the age restriction, that's where that falls in place. And Mr. Goulart and I have gone through and shown that that does still comply with the fair housing standards to be an age 55 and older restricted housing development. And that ultimately gets administered through the state also.
Well, we've had this come up before with some others, but then it fell through. I don't know what.
Well, two years ago, we had this project before you and unfortunately at that time the state had, that year changed one of their regulations dealing with proximity to previously funded projects. And that year, prior year, there was a project that had what were known as home funds, but was not allocated through the state agency. And that year they were stating that if a project that even had had home funds associated with it within a 15 mile radius, you could not approve a project the next year. Now, that had not been the case the previous years in 2012 and my understanding it is not the case in 2015's guidelines, but in the 2013 guidelines, that was the case. So that did not allow us to go forward with the project two years ago, even though we did have approval from this board for the rezoning. But your rezoning statutes with regards to planned unit development has a 12 month window on it, if I'm not mistaken. And so we've exceeded that 12 month window the last time we got rezoning. That's why I'm looking at the fact that if we can't go in for the 2015 funding packages, I would like to delay beyond June 8th to allow us to have our 12 month window longer than beyond June 8th of what would be 2016 at that time, to allow us to not keep coming back with the same project, but have it in place to allow for the 2016 submittals basically.
This will be 55 and over.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And not bring anybody else in, extended family.
No, no, you're not allowed to do that. All the residents within the complex have to be on the lease and they have to be 55 and older.
Anyone else? Thank you.
I thank you very much for your time. You'll have a great afternoon.
Next item on the agenda, ordinance is 2015 dash 02, third and final reading. Mr. Goulart.
This is ordinance number 2015 dash 02, amendment to the city of Fort Oglethorpe. Purchasing control ordinance and amendments there too. Whereas the purchasing control ordinance adopted April 13, 1987 and amended by ordinance number 2008 dash 05 is hereby amended as follows. The new sections will be as follows. Section 1, section 2, and section 6 is amended by striking $2,500 or more for any one purchase and replacing with $5,000. New section 1, this ordinance only affects the expenditures of $5,000 or more for any one purchase. Section 2, all purchases, rentals, lease of capital equipment or combination thereof or services, if the aggregate amount is 5,000 or more, the approval of council would have to be obtained before the purchase is made. New section number 6, any verbal or written commitment that would amount to $5,000 or more would have to be approved by the council before commitment is made.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogers. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Steny?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, second reading, 2015 dash 03. Mr. Goulart.
Ordinance number 2015 dash 04, rezoning be it ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, and it is hereby ordained by the authority thereof, that the following property owned by Ted C. Moss Volunteer LLC, known as Lot 9, Fort Town Drive, Fort Town Apartments, Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, is hereby rezoned to an R5 residential multifamily zoning. That's the second reading.
Next item on the agenda, 2015 dash 04. Mr. Goulart.
Okay, I'm sorry, that previous one was the first reading.
Your what?
That was the first reading. I mistakenly said the second.
Did you, did you read an ordinance on 04 or 03?
Three.
03 is the regular council meeting.
Three.
Three. Okay. All right. The next one on the agenda is 15 dash 04. Am I correct?
No, the next one would be 15 dash 05. The one I just, just read was 15 dash 04.
Skip 03.
Oh, I did skip 3?
Yes.
Okay.
The time of city council meetings.
You've been on vacation.
Okay, where are we?
I'm too big for her.
Okay.
I got it, Cabela's on my mind.
I thought that's when, the one you'd read the first time.
Yeah. This is ordinance number 2015 dash 03. An ordinance to provide for the time of the regular city council meeting. An ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, city of Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, to provide for provisions therein as authorized by state law, to provide for modifications, to provide for severalability, to repeal conflicting ordinances or parts thereof, to provide for an adoption, an effective date, and for all other purposes allowed by law. Whereas the Fort Oglethorpe City Charter, section 2.19, provides that the city council shall hold regular meetings at such times and places as shall be prescribed by ordinance, whereas the city of, whereas the Code of Fort Oglethorpe, section 2.36, provides for regular meetings of the city council. Whereas the mayor and council desire to change the regular meeting time as set forth in code section 2.36 by deleting said section in its entirety and providing for a new code The new code section 2.36 is regular meetings of the city council are held at city hall or such other place as may be designated on the second and fourth Monday of each month at 6:00 PM. I think that was the second reading of that one.
Okay. All right, we're at 2015 dash 05, the first reading. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, let's have at it. You got the floor, Mr. Goulart.
Ordinance number 2015 dash 05, rezoning be it ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, and it is hereby ordained by the authority thereof. Section 1, that the following property owned by Stephanie and Jason Doris, known as 309 Barnhart Circle, Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, is hereby rezoned to a C2 commercial exception zoning.
Thanks, Mr. Goulart. Resolutions, there is none. Unfinished business, there is none. Reading of city clerk, there is none. New business, Jerry Depkin's update of comprehensive land use plan. Jerry, you got the floor.
This is Jerry Depkin of 49 Eaton Circle. This is just to keep the city council aware of what's going on in this particular project so, and for the community. Tousa County and the cities of Ringgold and Fort Oglethorpe create a comprehensive land use plan which reflects plans for the future of each area. Some key areas are transportation, recreation, natural resource use such as parks, trails, housing development, rural use. The plan has input from the governments of both cities and the county, their respective departments and their citizens. This plan is worked and updated every five years. We are in the phase of reviewing the work which was proposed for the last five years. It's always a 20-year plan projecting out 20 years, but we review every five years to say if we're current or if things are meaningful or no longer useful. The review group is composed of three sets of stakeholders, one from Ringgold, one from Fort Oglethorpe, and one from the unincorporated area of the county. I was asked to serve as chair and to recruit four additional citizens of our town to serve on this review project as representatives of Fort Oglethorpe. Fort Oglethorpe Committee is composed of Steve Hersley, Divinia Stokes, Ken Newell, Paige Osborne, and myself. These five citizens have backgrounds in recreation, data programming, education, history, hospital situations, transportation, economic development, tourism, and various community services. We met April 30th and discussed development patterns such as automobile dependency in the towns and in the county, suburban sprawl, sewer infrastructure, and residential development, public transportation, connecting roads, drinking water availability, and commercial locations. All these are factors that city council knows about, city manager obviously does, and his departments who, who deal with this on a regular basis. The review group meets monthly at the Katusa County Commissioners Meeting Room. The next meeting is Thursday, May 28th. So it's the Thursday after Memorial Day weekend. It will begin at 6:00 PM and will last until 7:30 PM. And they're very good at this. The mayor and council and all interested citizens are welcome to attend each meeting as guests, even though you're not part of the quote committees, and you are free to make any comments. So when we get into discussion about traffic problems or how do we make east-west roads or, we have a lot of north-south interstates and whatnot, but how do we go east and west in this Battlefield Parkway? Can we put a road anyplace else? If you're sitting in the audience and you've got a comment or a suggestion to make, this is the time to step up. The point, well, and I checked with her today, she said about two years ago, the state changed the requirements of this 20-year plan and said that we need to have it reviewed every five years with citizen input. So that's why I went for recreation when we start talking, because there's recreation all throughout the, the county. But transportation, the hospital is the biggest employer, the second biggest employer in the county. So I tried to put together enough talent that we could speak on certain areas besides just being citizens who sit, you know, in a traffic jam on Battlefield Parkway twice, twice a day. So that's, we just really just discussed and tried to bring it up to date. And everyone is welcome. It's an open meeting anyway, but please come, especially, we really want the city council to be in attendance. There were a number of city council member from Ringgold and a number of county commissioners that were there. So really would appreciate your attendance on the 28th. And I'll send you an email just as a reminder. So, that's, that's what we're doing.
Next item on the agenda, approved purchase of mosquito spray.
Yes, sir. I'm asking for approval of our annual mosquito spray chemical. It's a 30 gallon drum. Our cost is $5,820 and that will make 300 gallons.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. Any further discussion? All who's in favor say aye. Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, approved purchase of water meters. Mr. Parkman.
Requested authorization to purchase 50 of the Neptune radio read meters. These meters will be set aside for use on the North Side Water Project while we replace the water line up Cross Street. We get ready to put it back in service, but the new water line in service will have the new meters installed at that time. Purchase will be from Delta Municipal Supply. $9,995 will come out of bond money that we set aside for the project since it is part of the project.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rogers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just say, y'all putting those, you guys are putting the water meters around the lanes there. I've noticed that. And the last couple of days it's been real warm, but they're doing a good job. They're staying busy.
We're getting, we're putting them in faster than we can get them in here, so.
Yeah, they're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Steny?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Motion carried unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, proposed approval of cancellation of May 25, 2015 council meeting because Memorial Day holiday. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. Any further discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
That meeting is canceled because of the holiday. Next item on the agenda, city manager's report. Mr. Goulart.
In the interest of time, I'll just briefly tell you that some time ago, we advised you that DOT was gonna be doing some traffic studies for us, one being at Cloud Springs and Cross Street about the traffic jams there in the morning and evening. They think that the, having the turn arrows will work, so they're probably gonna implement that. Also, they're probably, we'll know very soon, is they will put a right green arrow there at I-75 and Cloud Springs for all the traffic of going to Costco's where you can't turn right on red. So that's, that may be in the very near future. That's all I have.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, city council comments. Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing about police department. I've been there and here in the last few, oh, several weeks especially, all you hear from the news media is how awful police are. Wrong. They might be a bad apple here in the honor. I took one through the guts because I was a police. Now, our men do one fine job. You look up, you see them out here. I see them in my neighborhood. I see them up and down the roads here. And I'll tell you, that job is, he's wearing that right there. He doesn't know whether he's gonna go home tonight. By God's will, I'm still here from what happened to me and I thank him for it. You get a change, tell one of them, I appreciate you. They're not as bad as this news media bunch tries to make them out to be. Oh, I got to say.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Mr. Steny?
Thank you, sir. I'll keep it brief, no more than 20 minutes as agreed. What, you guys got somewhere to go? Smashing Purple Dress Luncheon at the Rosewood at Fort Oglethorpe this Friday, May 15th at 12 o'clock noon. It's $20 per ticket and it all goes to benefit the Alzheimer's Association. Give Allison or Connor a call at 706-866-4443 and help support Alzheimer's to find a cure. May Fest is upon us, May 30th from 10:00 AM till 2:00 PM at Rosewood. Free community events for all activities for kids, so bring your kids out. Popcorn, snow cones, hot dogs, bouncy house, face painting, and balloons. But while the kids are doing this, the adults can be over getting their better health, fitness, and wellness checkups. These are all free as well. There's over 35 vendors, free screenings, information samples, and more. So to keep our health going on. Armed Forces Day, third Saturday in May, always the 16th. And this began when President Harry Truman announced the holiday in his presidential proclamation, February 1950. And of course, the last Monday of May, we observe in honor of those who died in the armed forces. And that used to be Declaration Day. And Droid was there as well, I understand. Oh, wait, that was something different. To echo Johnny Red's, National Police Week begins Sunday, May the 10th and goes through Saturday, May the 16th. National Police Week is for those honoring, courage, saluting, and their sacrifice. This began in 1962 with President Kennedy. So please take this week to thank those in law enforcement for all their sacrifices. And lastly, sir, I will close with World No Tobacco Day. As you can see, World No Tobacco Day actually began in 1987. It is a global opportunity to draw attention to the dangers of tobacco smoking. Lung cancer is now the leading killer in both men and women in the United States and non-smokers have a 20 to 30% greater chance of developing lung cancer just being exposed to secondhand smoke. So take May 31st as the opportunity to stop smoking, saving your life and those you love who are around you. Sir, that's all.
Is that it? Okay. Mr. Gray?
I'd just like to echo what Johnny had to say there. Well put, Councilman Smith.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Mr. Crawford?
Yeah, just, I know we, yesterday was Mother's Day, just like, happy Mother's Day to everyone. And I guess I'm wearing my pink and Major League Baseball done it to honor mothers and stuff.
Thank you, thank you.
So I think I'll wear it for the mothers, especially the ones that are battling cancers and stuff like that. That's a, that's a, that's a tough situation. And hopefully we'll beat that disease. And the month of May is ALS Awareness Month. It's, we honor people or they, they try to honor people that's living with that disease. And you know, my, my uncle, which is obvious, he, he has it. So I wanna honor my Uncle Charles Lusk and he's keeping fighting, a good fight. And just to say to Cabela's, welcome to the city, Fort Oglethorpe. And that's it.
Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I'll mention that we, my wife and I had the opportunity to participate in Family Movie Night this past Saturday at it Barnhart Circle. And it was fantastic, by the way. It was awesome. Quite a few Fort Oglethorpe folks there. Hopefully that continues to be a really successful event. I'll mention quickly, there's gonna be three more, June 13th, July 11th, and August 8th, starting at 8:30 at it Barnhart Circle. The movie starts then. Pretty cool. Bring your family.
Is that it?
Yep.
Next item on the agenda, citizens petition. Alex Boyle. You got the floor?
Thank you.
Speak your name, please, for the record so it'll be, we can record your name.
My name is Alex Boyle. I represent Friends of Fremont and the US ACERS organization, as well as Georgia Bikes and the National Bike League out of Washington DC. Georgia Bikes is out of Savannah and they were just up here last week doing a law enforcement Georgia Bikes is out of Savannah, and they were just up here last week doing a law enforcement training. I didn't see this officer there, so he may, he may want to get those community education hours in later, talking about bike safety. And on behalf of Fremont Civics, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you for serving your community in an elected or appointed contract capacity. And I know that occasionally, and you might not recall any of this, but from time to time, your names may be associated with less than favorable approval comments. Let me say that I recognize, and I've spoke to more city council groups than I care to think about, and I try and always thank them for their service. At this time, I would like to also thank the guests and citizens and community people that are represented. And I'll get right to the point, because I know that there's something going on that you guys want to get out for. So I'll try and be as brief as possible. National Bike Month started May 1st. I was the featured and honored centennial speaker of Fort Oglethorpe Kiwanis. You may have seen the, the write-up in the Kewa News. If not, I've made copies, and I'll give that to whoever your secretary is for your, for the record. And we kicked off in Fort Oglethorpe for a reason. We have, and I say we, I graduated from Lakeview Fort Oglethorpe, class of '82, and yes, with Allison. And I have grown up in this area, and cycling is a national growth industry, as well as a community-friendly activity. And you may not be aware, but the average cyclist, and this is representative of over half the cyclists you see, typically make over $100,000 a year. That's not bad. And some of these people may want to spend money in Fort Oglethorpe. In our organization, ACERS is an acronym. It stands for Allied Cyclists for Economics, Recreation, and Sport. And I'd be happy to speak, and Mr. Goulart and I have had a brief conversation, and he and I may continue this, I hope, at your encouragement, to help Fort Oglethorpe find greater ways to embrace and encourage those citizens who also happen to have families, which I think Fort Oglethorpe offers some incredible family opportunities, whether it's the, somebody help me with the name of the recreational spot down 2A. I can't think of the name of that business. I am so sorry. But anyway, there's all kinds of great opportunities. But the biggest pearl for Fort Oglethorpe, I think we all would agree, has to be the gateway to the Chickamauga National Military Park. And that gateway starts, by our definition of sharing this, at the intersection of 2A and 27. Because right at that intersection, from there to the first driveway at the museum, where the Incredible Gun Museum and the Visitor Center at Chickamauga Battlefield, is almost precisely one mile. Our organization, Friends of Fremont, along with US ACERS, would like to see the city council at some future point designate officially that one mile as the Green Mile Gateway for civic community cycling for Fort Oglethorpe to the Chickamauga Battlefield. I think that would be a wonderful way of highlighting an interesting way to brand a particular mile. And we use the word green because most people that ride bikes don't burn gas when they're riding their bikes, or at least not the ones I'm familiar with. And we want to encourage citizens to embrace an incredible activity that serves us all, and serves us all very well. On that note, the same week that I think is law enforcement appreciation, and this, this week that we are in, starts National Bike to Work Week. Friday is National Bike to Work Day. And Saturday is the ACERS premiere at Park Place Plaza and Park Place Restaurant from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM. We will be recognizing citizens from all around our communities, including the greatest suburb of Fort Oglethorpe, Chattanooga. And we want to encourage all those who bike to work to please come out. We would like for you to advance register at USAVERS.com, USAVERS.com, and come out. It is free if you advance register, $20.20 at the door. That represents 2020, our five-year goal for our community, to truly embrace and show some economic impact of a five-year plan that we would like to share in a working session with this city council, as well as the great people in Chickamauga, because they may want some of that, too, and we want to share the wealth. With that in mind, I humbly submit a request that, of course, would require a formal motion by one of you esteemed county, city council members, to recognize Saturday, our ACERS premiere day, as Fort Oglethorpe's official cycle awareness day. If you would entertain such a motion by allowing one of you great people to make that formal, now would be a wonderful time, if that is possible.
Mayor will entertain one of that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I like it. Yeah. You got your first and second right here.
Yep.
Okay, we've got it.
Thank you so much for allowing us to recognize Saturday as the first time any municipal or county government in the quad counties has ever done anything official to recognize cycling in Northwest Georgia. You're the first.
Let me state something, too. You, you mentioned that one-mile stretch of road. We applied for and have received a $3 million ARC grant. If you haven't seen the plans, they're in my office down there. And it does have a bike trail in it.
On both sides.
Both sides. And we're missing the boat by, in, in the past, by not taking advantage of that. There's a ton of people come down there, and you talked about the economics of it. We need to send all these people back, and you've heard me say this before, back to Washington State, or wherever they come from, broke. Get their money. And I mean, $3 million, we're not going to collect $3 million in property and in federal income tax from City of Fort Oglethorpe. So we're basically building that road with New Yorkers and Californians' tax dollars. So we are thinking about, we are thinking about bicycles.
And looking at it. And there are some other things that might be able to be done, and I would love to speak at another time for posterity issues, as well as time. I heard the first and second, was that, did that include, I didn't hear it, but perhaps you said it under your voice, none opposed, the motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to vote on it.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes it. God bless you. God bless the City of Fort Oglethorpe. Thank you, Officer. My father's a retired policeman, so I certainly have a respect for that.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle.
Thank you.
I don't believe we have anything on executive session tonight, do we?
No, sir.
Not tonight, this afternoon?
No, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
There are seconds.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.